20th, 2023. This is a city council meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley, member of the Epic Church. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in prayer. Father God, I just want to thank you for this beautiful spring day. Thank you for bringing it to us. Let us continue to feel joy as we enjoy our city. Lord, I want to thank you for each of those on the dais, those that could not be with us tonight. Lord, let the work of this city continue to be for all. And Lord, let us have a consensus and a unity that has not been seen as much as we would all like. Lord, I just ask that you continue to bless us, give us a desire to work together, to have conversations, and to do what's right. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
McAndless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
All right, and next on the agenda is citizens' request. Muriel Ludeman is here. So, oh, please forgive me, Muriel. We have one person who signed up earlier, so please forgive me, but you'll be next. We've got Brian Morris, who's first, so please forgive me.
Good evening, and thank you for your time, the opportunity to be heard. I am talking about the pit bull ban. We all know that the Dangerous Dog Ordinance provides the legal protection to keep people safe. We all know that the pit bull ban hurts independents financially. We know that this ban keeps pit bull owners from moving into independents and creates cruel and needless drama for too many of our residents. We know that it is only a matter of time until this is overturned. Harry Truman once said that a person who is influenced by the polls or is afraid to make unpopular decisions is not a person to represent the welfare of the community. Requiring a petition drive would be a dog and pony show. You have the power, you have the authority to correct this injustice without needless drama. And I believe deep in my spirit that this governing body has the courage and the moral character to do the right thing, to resolve this quickly, and to let the politics be damned. Thank you for your time. May you be well.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, and next, Muriel, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Muriel Ludeman. I live at 620 South Main Street. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission, and I'm here to speak this evening about our efforts to improve the look and quality of life in independents. We are collaborating with the Independence is Alive and Well Initiative, other organizations, and interested individuals to expand our influence in bettering our city through all of our resources, knowing that we are better working together than we are alone. In this regard, we want to let the council know that the Sustainability Commission is in support of the premise of the memorandum of understanding with the Community Services League, which is being considered this evening. We feel it is in alignment with the commission's vision and mission. We also support the mayor's monthly trash pickup events. Every member of the commission plans to participate, and we are very supportive of the city's efforts to stabilize and improve our city this way. We are developing events to promote sustainable practices like encouraging bike riding and creative recycling, and look forward to presenting our plans later this year. If there's anything that the council wants us to work on, we are available and eager to help. Respectfully submitted, Muriel Ludeman.
Muriel, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have Lucy Young.
(Inaudible) walking in front.
Oh, no worries. And please state your address, please.
2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057.
Thank you.
Can we stop pretending that BSL is working? The ban hasn't worked, or there should only be 17-year-old pit bulls living in our city. We have more pit-type dogs in independents than when we did in 2006, when the ban was put in place. The national estimate in 2022 shows that pit-type dogs were approximately 8% of the population of dogs in the United States. So, did BSL even work? Saying that we have BSL in place gives a false sense of security for the community, as it is impossible, and it is impossible, to enforce. But we can't just remove the ban and expect people to be responsible owners. Our focus should be on responsible ownership utilizing our Dangerous Dog Ordinance. We also need to institute a responsible owner's legislation. By using that and our Dangerous Dog Ordinance, the goal of protecting public safety will be met. Accountability falls on the owner, not the dog breed. Please note that Lee Summit and Grain Valley never implemented BSL, but instead rely on their Dangerous Dog Ordinances. The original petition language submitted in 2006 was not certified, but we know it exists. That petition language asked the city council, quote, "to submit to the voters." The 2006 city council failed to do so and brought forth an ordinance instead. So, we're asking you to follow through with that request. Please submit the BSL question to the voters. The city council is faced with a dilemma. Either send it to the ballot or overturn the ban. I want you to know, this wouldn't be the first ban overturned in independents. When I was on the city council, IPD came to us and asked us to overturn the fireworks ban. The police could not keep up with their calls of service with the fireworks complaints. IFD wanted the ban left in place, as fireworks injure people and destroy property when not used correctly. The fire department didn't want to issue tickets, so the council voted to remove the ban and regulate the fireworks instead. That ordinance has been tweaked several times and allows our nonprofits to sell them to the general public. Regulation was the key. If you look at your agenda, Resolution 23-724 is repealing an ordinance due to economic reasons and limitations of ability with AV equipment. So, let's look at the economics and availability with the BSL ordinance. If the animal shelter were to impound every dog, or pit-type dog, that lived in independents, there wouldn't be room in our shelter to house them all. As we run a no-kill shelter, these dogs would live their entire lives in our shelter. Our city budget is up to, already up to $1 million, how much a year for staff. How much more will we need if we doubled the number of dogs housed by the city? Please consider also a moratorium on removing these animals from loving homes. If they are a biting dog or a dangerous dog, they will be removed by the Dangerous Dog Ordinance. There is no reason to remove these animals from their loving homes while they're causing no problems. Do this at least until the BSL issue is resolved. Stop the heartbreak, stop the political nightmare, stop BSL. Please overturn it or put it on the ballot. Thank you.
If I can, may I ask, please refrain from applause. The reason being is, there may be somebody that speaks this evening that you're opposed to, and we don't want it to be a situation where you cheer for one person and boo another. That makes a scenario where, in a confined place like this, if they pass each other in the hallway, things can escalate. So, I'm just asking you for a sense of decorum, a sense of respect, a sense of kindness towards each other, a sense of civility, to please refrain from applause, if you could please. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next is a friend of mine, Miriam Keith. Miriam. And Miriam, please state your address, please.
Okay. I'm Miriam Keith, 12607 East 34th Terrace South, Independence, Missouri 64055. Good evening, city council. I want to start by thanking you all for your service to our community. I've lived in independents for over 25 years. The last two years, I've spent a significant amount of time working on the pit bull ban with a group of people that have been amazing, attempting to get it repealed. Independents has now become the minority as far as cities that still have a ban on specific breeds of dogs. Since 2018, 72 cities have overturned pit bull bans. Of those 72, 70 of them were overturned by their city councils. Most recently, in our area, Excelsior Springs overturned theirs by a vote by the city council. In 2019, Mayor Weir requested the Independence Advisory Board of Health and the Jackson County Animal Welfare Committee to review BSL and make recommendations. After months of research, the recommendation was to completely repeal BSL, educate citizens on the Dangerous Dog Ordinance. For those of you unaware, we have a Dangerous Dog Ordinance, making BSL redundant and unnecessary. Study after study shows that pit bull-type breeds are not any more aggressive than most of the highly popular breeds people consider family-friendly dogs. Bad owners make bad dogs. But let's talk about what really matters to most of you, which is how this affects the city's pocketbook. Since BSL was put into place, this ordinance has cost the city a tremendous amount of money. We've lost Great Plains SPCA. They reported that the ban was costing them over $100,000 extra a year to operate the shelter. They pulled out, causing the city to overtake the shelter. In a report pulled by John Dunham and Associates, the estimated cost for independents to have BSL is over $144,000 a year. Enforcing BSL also takes our animal control officers away from doing other things that may be more important. The current estimate from the shelter records an average day for a pit bull-type breed is 70 days versus a non-pit bull breed, which is 31 days. That's an extra $975 per every pit bull-type dog that our shelter takes in.
Miriam, excuse me. Could you repeat that, just so I hear that site?
Yeah, the, which part?
Just the part you just said about the statistics about, I think, the number of days.
Yeah, the current estimate from the shelter records is an average day for a pit bull-type breed is 70 days versus a non-pit bull being 31 days.
Thank you.
No problem. $975 on average is what a pit bull type costs our shelter to take in, extra over a non-pit bull-type dog. Another issue shows that most breed identification is done on appearance alone. The study shows one in five dogs whose DNA were tested were misidentified by shelter staff. This happens in our shelter all the time. Some examples include a dog called Nellie. She was originally labeled a pit bull by the shelter, and then when listed for adoption, she was changed to a border collie mix. We also have dogs in the adoption page right now that the labeling makes absolutely no sense. Biff and Diana are two dogs right next to each other listed on the page. They look almost identical. Biff is listed as a terrier American pit bull mix, and Diana is listed as a boxer-retriever mix. The problem is, these are the same people that identify breeds of citizens' pets. So, these citizens receiving letters stating that they have a pit bull-type mix have sent me pictures. One couple, their dog looks almost exactly the same as Samson, which is a dog listed at the shelter. However, the shelter has Samson listed as a retriever Labrador mix. Independents unfortunately has a reputation, because I've talked to countless of people over the last year that said they've either moved out of independents or would never move to independents because of our ban. How much is that costing us in tax dollars? How much local patronage could we have if those people lived here for our businesses? Dog licensed, dogs have been identified by licensed veterinarians as being a different breed than a pit bull. However, the people that send the letters have decided that they know better than a vet.
You have one minute.
Huh?
You have one minute.
Okay. How long is it before the city is sued over its breed ban and has to spend enormous amount of money defending itself? There are loving, sweet dogs sitting in our shelter for months, costing taxpayers thousands of dollars that deserve homes. We also can't get any nonprofit to take over our shelter as long as we have this ban. Please do what's right, and what so many of our neighboring cities have done, and let's end this once and for all. If a petition is what you want, we've agreed to do the work. But if we do the work, will you do yours?
Thank you very much, Miriam. Next is Charles Ray, and Charles, you spoke on this topic before, so you have three minutes, please. And then after Charles is Tanya. So, you might want to line up behind Charles, if you like, if you feel comfortable doing that, so. Thank you, Charles, and please give us your address, and then proceed, please.
My name is Charles Ray. I live at 10212 East Kentucky Road, Independence, Missouri. I'm here today to speak on the Breed Specific Ban, as well as everybody else. I also spoke to some council members who said that this ban was put in place based on good faith. I see enough people here to show good faith that the ban should be removed. Most of these incidents where the ban has caused an issue has been where somebody has called in because they've seen a pit bull in somebody's backyard, where they've seen some child out walking with a pit bull. They're not calling on the dogs that are running loose in our neighborhoods, the dogs that are an issue, but they're calling in on people who have dogs just in their backyard because of the way they look. I, for one, have been targeted. I feel like my whole family was because of this. Our neighbors had the same situation. Then, when I took my dogs to the animal hospital here in independents, Jackson County Animal Hospital, they said my dog is a Labrador-Boxer mix. And so, I take that letter and bring it down here, and then they tell me that that's not okay, and that's not acceptable, and that my dog looks like a pit bull, so they're not going to accept that. Since then, I haven't heard from them, and I'm not saying that, I don't know what's going on. But should I have to sit and wait and wonder what's going to happen, or what that is, when, just as other people have said, at the shelter, they got dogs that look exactly like my dog, 100%, and there's a Labrador-Boxer mix as well. But they're not removing them, and they're trying to adopt them, dogs, into our city. I mean, is that okay? And then it's not for me? So, I just, I don't understand where the line's drawn, or what's okay and what's not okay. I mean, it's, but I know it's up to you guys to make it right, and if it was placed in good faith, then I think that it should be in good faith that you remove it as well.
Thank you, Charles. Tanya, you are next, and please state your address, please. Thank you.
16009 East 31st Terrace South. And basically, this is how this affects me. Just to give a little history, April 26th, my father-in-law passes away. Two weeks to that day, my mom passes away. Two weeks after that, thank you. Two weeks after that, I find out I have stage III melanoma. On December 23rd, my son finds his father had had a massive heart attack in his sleep, and he has died. On Valentine's Day, I have found out that my melanoma has now metastasized to my right lung. I tell you all of this to tell you this. Cooper, who is a pit mix, has been with me through all of this. Now, I take chemo. It's $15,000 a month. I pay $1,500 a month for medication. My decision now is, do I get my medication that could help me live longer, or do I leave my home of 55 years? I've lived here all of my life, so I can keep Cooper. I have been a responsible dog owner. I have paid $2,600 to have Cooper trained because they are, people are scared of them. I've done my part. Cooper hasn't done anything to anybody, and I'm dying. Let's be honest here. I'm dying. And you guys want to take away the one thing that, the last little bit of joy I've got, over something as silly? I mean, you have, you have the dog, the, whatever dog ordinance. Why does, why do I and my dog have to pay the price for this? I've done my part. But now, I have to decide, do I take meds? Do I move, so I can keep my dog? You guys have, as Brian said, you guys have the power. Do the right thing, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Tanya, I'm sorry for all of your losses and for your challenges, so.
I don't tell you all of that for sympathy or pity. That is my reality.
Sure.
I just would like for the right thing to be done.
Next up is Roxanne Robinson, and Roxanne, you have three minutes, because I believe you spoke on this before. And please state your address, please, Roxanne.
Good evening. My name is Roxanne Robinson, and I live at 131 East Farmer, here in Independence, Missouri. I am talking about the rezoning. A meeting we had on February the 14th, case number 23-100-06, that the notice was sent out to the neighbors within 180 feet about the rezoning of R301/PUD, and C2, the commercial, which wants to be changed, rezoned to R6, the single-family homes.
And Roxanne, if I could ask you just to move the microphone, so you're speaking right into it, please.
Okay. I'm sorry. Is that better?
I think so. Proceed, and we'll see.
Okay. Which will go, this will go before the city council on April the 5th. We want to make sure that both sides of Farmer Street are going to be the same zoning, R6. It was also promised at that meeting that you was going to find out who the owner, or owners of the vacant lots on Farmer Street, and what they were planning to do with that property. There's about seven lots in there, and I believe the addresses are like 132 up to 138 East Farmer Street. And this is my concern, like I said, mainly that we want the whole street of Farmer to be the same zone, R6. And that's my concern, before April the 5th.
Very good. So, just clarification purposes, you want to make sure the entire street is zoned R6, is what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, because they, yes, that's true.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Robert Rockenberry, or Brackenberry. And then next would be Tara Kelly Tweedy. Okay, you're close, so we're good. No worries. Please proceed, Robert.
Yeah, my name's Bob Brackenberry. I live at 400 North Cogan Lane in Independence. Dogs are working animals that humans have selectively bred to enhance certain attributes and abilities. Pit bulls are bred to fight and kill. There are a small percentage of dog breeds Americans keep, yet they're responsible for half the serious dog attacks. They're currently banned in 32 countries and in communities all across our nation. This is in the interest of public safety. Banning them in independents was done to solve a problem, and it was effective. What would be gained by lifting the ban? Or more importantly, what would be lost by lifting the ban? Public safety? Is it worth one more serious incident to allow the harboring of a dangerous animal for the sake of vanity? And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Terry, you're up next, and if you can please state your address, please.
Teresa Kelly Tweedy, 3111 South Arrowhead Drive, Independence, Missouri. First of all, I'd just like to say to Tanya, I am very sorry for all of your losses, and I do understand your love of your animal. I don't want anybody in here to think that I believe that all of you are bad animal owners, but I still would like to speak my piece about the breed, or the question of what dog is the breed. These children were from loving homes. They were their pets. I could show you 50 to 100 pictures just like this, from loving homes, children, and many of them have died. You might wonder why I'm even interested in this. I was a registered nurse in 1985 at the Independence San, and I took care of a woman named Helen Harder. She was brutally mauled here in independents by a pit bull dog when her neighbor, it just jumped over, the, the dog was in a fence, but it jumped over the fence. And if, she would have died if it had not been for two other neighbors that had shovels and beat him off of her. She had broken leg, lacerations, bites on her arms, face, and throat. She was only saved by a couple of those neighbors. Otherwise, she would have died. I'll never forget how she looked and had, how she had to live with those scars. Those scars don't go away. I'm sure that Alan Hill still has a lot of his scars from what happened here in 2008. I'm no newbie regarding animals or their welfare. When I was 21, I started an organization, a neuter spay program, that helped over a million animals be neutered and spayed in Missouri and Kansas. We wrote legislation and lobbied and were responsible for two animal shelters, one being the very first one off Truman Road. So, you know how old I am. I could stand here all day and show you these horrifying pictures of children mauled and killed by these bully breeds. You'd be shocked to know that huge majority of these deceased children were killed by their own pets. They savagely ripped the limbs off of people. Kylene Waltman of South Carolina had both arms ripped off by three loose pit bulldogs, and now she might even lose one of her legs, seven months so far in the hospital. There's a growing body of peer-reviewed papers from medical doctors and surgeons documenting the growing health, public health and safety dangers of the pit bull-type dogs. The US and Canada are sounding an alarm, in no uncertain terms, that the pit bull dog and the pit ball, the old dog, I don't know how to say that, pit bulldog type are a public crisis, a public health crisis. From 1989 to 2014, there was 41 different peer-reviewed medical studies documenting the impact of pit bulldogs on our healthcare system. The papers were not written by groups or animal shelters. They were written by surgeons and doctors and published in medical journals, and these are the most authoritative information on the topic. Maybe we've been blessed because we haven't had another savage attack like what happened to my two citizens I'm talking about. Maybe it's because of the banning of bully breeds. But how can anybody consider this any form of discrimination, which I've heard, when the statistics and facts are there? 30 countries- 30 countries have banned them completely. 937 cities have enacted safety breeds laws or outright banned them. Pit bull attacks have risen 830% just since 2007. They've killed over 600 Americans.
You have one minute.
They've killed over 80,000 pets and livestock every year. The U.S. military bans them. And furthermore, they are the most abused. This is a safety issue. Children have a right to be safe in their own yards and in our parks. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. And Deborah Wilson. And Deborah, on the form, you didn't say what you wanted to speak about.
Oh, about the pit bull ban.
Okay. Is it okay if I write that on the form for you? Okay.
Thank you.
And if you can give us your address, please.
Okay. This is Deborah Wilson. I live at 3212 South Cochise Avenue, Independence. That's right. I want to start out by saying I love animals, but that doesn't mean I'll have a place within the city limits. I love lions, tigers, and bears, but they don't belong in the city. There are breeds of dogs whose existence for centuries was to be both aggressive and fighters. Unfortunately, pit bulls is such a breed. Who of us have not visited a friend and been backed into a corner while the owner assured us they wouldn't bite? Furthermore, many owners do not train their dogs so they have control of them when it's excited. Pit bulls are not bad dogs, but respond to their breeding. There is too many stories with bad endings to expose this city, its citizens, and especially the innocent children, to this risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that was all the citizen requests for this evening. And we'll go to the next item. This will bring us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the recommendations to the city manager. Does anyone want to pull anything for individual consideration? Please proceed.
Item 10, please.
Okay. Item 10 has been pulled. Out of the 10 items, anything else need to be pulled for individual discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the final resolution that's listed 23-724.
What number is that?
It would be number 11. It's, it's separately listed under resolutions.
Thank you very much. All right. So we've got item number 10, and I'll also, if it, for the sake of argument, number 11, which is the Resolution 23724. Any other discussion? Okay. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed. Oh, please, we're going to vote first, and then we'll talk about the individual items. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the consent agenda passes six to zero. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed with discussion on item number 10.
Thank you. Some of you may have read the article in the newspaper about Cleanup KC, which was a partnership between Hope Faith Ministry and the city to do some trash pickup. And anybody who's run for office in the last several years, the most common concerns that people bring forward is roadside trash and homeless populations. This is an opportunity for the city to partner with Community Services League. And may I inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
City manager, would you just give an overview of how you see this project working?
Thank you. I'd be happy to. Sometime last year, a few months ago, the council approved our spending plan for our federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars. Included in that was $100,000 for litter and trash debris removal and cleanup. As staff, we'd been kicking around how best to execute and implement and act upon that. We were approached by partners at Community Services League, who had remembered that one of our prior Parks and Recreation Directors had brought this concept up. And we thought maybe this was the right time, now that we had some financial resources, to work with that, to bring this forward. So under this program, the city is allocating our $100,000 of federal funds that were provided to us under the stimulus program. We are partnering through a contract with Community Services League. They will hire individuals who are experiencing homelessness, or some sort of, you know, in the very broadest sense of that term, homelessness, to provide the trash and refuse cleanup. It'll be about a 27-week program, so about half of the year, running usually from late March to late September. The wage will be set at $15 an hour for these individuals, paid daily. And then there will also be eligibility for a $3 per day amount to be deposited into an account that can go towards housing solutions for these individuals as well. So this gets them hourly wages each day they work, and also starts to afford some funding toward housing, as well as providing a solution to an ongoing issue in our community with the litter and debris.
Okay. Anything? You bet. Is that all you need? Okay, very good. Anyone else want to discuss it?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I think it's a wonderful idea to have, utilize some resources to begin to clean up our city and, in turn, help those who want to be a part of our, the need, and help them with their housing needs as well. When we're talking $100,000, I'm always wondering, Mr. Walker, if you could help, how, do we have anything in place in our agreement with CSL to bring oversight of how the money's being spent?
Yeah, the contract has the deliverables in them, the report backs to the city, as well some pretty stringent specificity about allocation of funds. And I should mention, when I said the $15, that is, that is actually $15 per day total, $12 for the, the work performed, and $3 for the escrow accounts. So I just wanted to clarify that. But that is the level of detail in there, about hours worked, duties performed, and then how those funds are going to be allocated on a day-to-day basis.
Okay. And is there a way that maybe we have, like our Sustainability Committee, work with them just to be able to give some, as stakeholders, with the effort? If the Sustainability Committee could work in conjunction, just get some types of reports of the progress, of, of the commitment that we're making financially, with the progress that CSL is having, and, and how many people they're helping, just some return on investment, just so that people know. Because when we put $100,000 of tax dollars out there, people want to know what it's being spent on, and the, you know, if there's an effectiveness, what they're seeing. And if there's some way we could have maybe Sustainability just work with them to bring some oversight so that they can report back to us, just talk about any improvements or any concerns that, that they may have. Is that, is that realistic, or something we could do?
We will definitely need that report back, certainly as part of our reporting requirements with the federal government. So getting those reports from Community Services League will be required, and I think reviewing that as part of the ongoing mission of Sustainability Commission as they meet, is perfectly fine to let them know about, you know, volumes of trash collected, et cetera, and get some feedback about the effectiveness of the program as well.
Well, if there's, if there's a way we can make that happen, or put that on their agenda, to begin that, that communication with CSL, and whoever's going to be in charge of that program, just to work together for that accountability, I would, I'd appreciate that.
And I know the council's been very clear about wanting to be data-driven on all of our things. So just as a quick highlight, some of the data that we're tracking with this are pounds of trash collected, miles walked, hours worked. So we'll be having some of that information provided monthly, and we'll circulate that among any, the council and any of the other boards or commissions like Sustainability that might be interested in it.
Yeah, just other things like the focused areas that they're going to be working on, maybe monthly or quarterly, whatever they feel like they can, they can bring back to us would be, so that we can communicate out to the community where these efforts are being made.
Very good.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Please proceed.
I, I forgot to mention the name of this program is Independence Together. And so you may see folks on the roadside with their yellow safety vests on, and their trash baskets that say Independence Together. So I hope people will give them a wave and encourage them in their work. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I agree, I echo my colleague's hearty support. I do agree with the questions that have been raised about, you know, how many miles have been walked, hours worked, locations, and then, you know, overall success of the program. And then also, I'd like to see numbers on, because we want to give people skills so that they can in fact, you know, get out of homelessness and learn skills, so that they can actually have a job and work. And I'd like to see those kinds of numbers, too, if I could, Mr. Walker, so.
Happy to do so.
With that being said, I will turn it over to you, Councilmember Hobart, and discuss, oh, okay, let's do the vote on this item first, and then we'll go to the next one, so.
I move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number 10.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And it passes six to zero. And that brings us to item number 11, Resolution 23724, repealing Resolution Number 6724. So, very, very good.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may address the city manager briefly.
Sure.
Mr. Walker, it's my understanding, the resolution this is repealing was a very broad catch-all that our beloved council member DeLuce, DeLuce pushed for to sort of record and broadcast every board and commission meeting that we had. Is that your?
That is correct.
Okay. And certainly, that's sort of a, a, a much broader investment of city resources than we need. I agree with that. So, the reason I pulled this off the consent agenda, and I'll direct the council's attention to Section 2, the most common and most necessary committees that are livestreamed, recorded and uploaded that are listed here, the Audit Finance Committee, the Charter Commission, which we recently voted on, the Planning and Zoning, the City Planning Commission, the, and the PUAB. Obviously, those are all committees that we all commonly watch, and many of the citizens do, too. There are two committees listed on there that rarely meet, and I believe it's not an efficient use of city resources to have city staff attempt or be a necessary use of resources to try to record or upload those. That's the Board of Adjustment, and the Independence Economic Development Incentive Commission. And before anybody panics, I'll, I'll mention that the, the TIFF Commission is, in Section 3, still one that is recorded and uploaded, it just isn't livestreamed. But the Independence Economic Development and Incentive Commission rarely meets. The Board of Adjustment rarely meets. So, I'm going to make a motion to amend this resolution to remove the Board of Adjustment and the Independence Economic Development and Incentive Commission from Section 2, so that they will not be recorded livestreamed and, livestreamed and uploaded.
So if I understand it correctly?
Okay.
The Board of Adjustment, excuse me, Councilmember Fears, Board of Adjustment and the Independence Economic Development Incentives Commissions will be excluded from it with your amendment. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Fears.
Second that.
Okay, thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay. So we've got a, we've got an amendment and a second. Thank you, Mr. Fears, for doing that. Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment. We will now take a vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the main resolution here in a moment. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the amendment passes six to zero. That'll take us back to the resolution. Any further discussion on the resolution itself?
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve 23724 with the amendment that was just passed. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 23724 passes six to zero. Very good. That'll take us to the regular agenda. Those items for second reading. So Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill Number 23-007, An Ordinance Authorizing Final Disposition of Certain City Audio and Video Records That Have Met All Requirements to Be Eligible for Such Disposition. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on this? Mr. City Manager, if I may, please, just for clarification for myself, this was the item we had discussed at the study session.
That is correct.
And from that, everyone, from my understanding, was okay with the, keeping the things as we had it presented, so we can keep the second reading, and there's no amendments being presented, as I understand it.
No amendments were offered to my office, or requested to be brought forward.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the amendment passes six to zero. All right, Madam City Clerk, please read the next bill.
Bill Number 23-016, An Ordinance Authorizing the Federal Lands Access Program Funds Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Historic Trails Phase One Project. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion?
Question?
Please proceed.
May I ask?
Yes, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just to be sure I understand that this, these are funds that are passed through from the state for this project, and the city is not out dollars for this, even though it's under the purview of the Streets Commission?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Other further discussions? Let's go ahead and proceed. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 23016 passes six to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read the next bill.
Bill Number 23-017, An Ordinance Authorizing a Contract with Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity for the Administration of Home Repair Program for Low to Moderate Income Homeowners Utilizing 2022-2023 CDBG Program Funds in the Amount Not to Exceed $138,596.43. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, so CDBG funds for this item will be for seniors, disabled, and people of low income for home repairs. And as I understand it, that helps with one of the strategic goals of... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, so CDBG funds for this item will be for seniors, disabled, and people of low income for home repairs. And as I understand it, that helps with one of the strategic goals of prevention of homelessness for people who are at risk of being removed from their homes from code violations.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears. Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And item number 23-017 passes six to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read the next.
Bill Number 23-018, An Ordinance Approving the Amended 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan in Adopting the Home ARP Allocation Plan and Making the Necessary Appropriations. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears. Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 23-018 passes six to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read the last one on the list.
Bill Number 23-019, An Ordinance in Chapter 12, Article 2, Controlled Substances of the Independent City Code. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just clarifying that this is modifying our statutes to be in consistency with the modification made to the Constitution allowing for recreational marijuana. Is that correct?
That's correct. The petition that was enacted by the voters this past November legalizes a certain amount of marijuana to be possessed for recreational purposes, and this brings city code into conformance with that new state constitutional amendment.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, a brief question.
You had, you kind of broke up there a second. Do you have a question?
I'd like to ask the city manager a question.
Please proceed.
Okay. Mr. Walker, I'm wondering if you can clarify a bit for this, on this ordinance, just the, the dollar amounts of some of the fines and things, are those from prior, the prior ordinance that was in place?
Regarding the fine structure and the ordinance, I am going to defer to the city attorney council member for a solid legal response for you.
Councilman Jeremy Coover, City Councilor, there's, depending on which ones you're looking at, some were already in place. If they needed to be changed based on the constitutional language, those were. The ones that weren't changed are, were pre-existing. So I guess it depends on exactly which ones you're, you're looking at. But if they had, if they, if they required a change to be consistent, then we changed them to match the language. If they didn't require change, then we left them alone.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I, I think what I would want to ask going forward, I know that we're in the process of revising these and other similar things to take into account the new law on marijuana. I think what I would just want to ask city manager to consider, and that would be to take a look at the, the fine structure and see if the, the fine structure is really adequate to help to bring to pass the, the kind of action we're really looking for to, for people to do. And to me, a $250 fine is, while it's not insignificant, don't get me wrong, but we are trying to allow certain kinds of action and deter other action. And for some people, a $250 fine may not be enough of a deterrent to really impact their decision. So if we could, going forward, as the, as the Health Department continues to review some of this, or as the city manager continues to review some of this, I just would encourage a consideration about re-looking at some of the fine structure and make sure that we are actually getting into the, the kind of action that we want to have happen, getting that to take place. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, city councilmember. Anyone else for those questions? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 23-019 passes six to zero. That takes us to first readings.
Bill Number 23-020, An Ordinance Approving Rezonings from District R-30 PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development and District C-2 General Commercial to District R-6 Single Family Residential for the properties located at 137 East College Street, 110, 116, 118, and 120 East Farmer Street, 112, 113, 116, 118, 120, 121, 125, 127, 130, 134, and 137 East Waldo Avenue, and 501, 507, 601, 605, 609, 615, 617, 619, and 623 North Main Street in Independence, Missouri.
Okay. Any discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you. So this is just the first reading. We'll have the second reading on April 5th. It won't be on that Monday, it'll be that, that Wednesday, April 5th. So this is just a set of corrective measures that we've been doing throughout the city and just correcting old zonings and putting them into what our current status should be. Mrs. Robinson was, was speaking earlier about this zoning, and also I was looking at our development potentials coming down the line. So on April 25th, our next stretch of corrective zoning will be that stretch of, of properties that you were speaking of and that we've talked about and had concern about. So that is in the process. So it will be before the Planning Commission on the 25th of April, and we'll get those 10, 12 properties corrected and rezoned back to R-6, which is single-family and not commercial or multifamily. So we're moving in that direction. Just keep hanging on there.
Very good. Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, go ahead and read 23-021.
Bill Number 23-021, An Ordinance Approving Rezoning from District C-1 Neighborhood Commercial to District C-2 General Commercial for the property at 3300 Blue Ridge Cut Off in Independence, Missouri. This next ordinance is an emergency, so it'll receive two readings. Bill Number 23-500, An Ordinance Maintaining the Rates of Gross Receipts Taxes for All Applicable Utilities Operating Within the City and Declaring an Emergency. Bill Number 23-500, An Ordinance Maintaining the Rates of Gross Receipts Taxes for All Applicable Utilities Operating Within the City and Declaring an Emergency. Second and final reading.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears. Perkins.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 23-500, First Reading and Emergency Clause is passing six to zero, and that'll bring us to information items only. And then that'll bring us to councilmember comments. And since you are online, Councilmember Fears, I'll let you go first, if that's okay.
That's fine. I really don't have anything tonight, other than to say I really appreciate the efforts of staff that, that allow us to do this type of, of calling in and joining from a long, long way away. I've been able to hear real good tonight. Sorry that you weren't able to hear me as well as I'm hearing you, but I appreciate those efforts, and we'll see you all again soon.
Thank you, councilmember.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Perkins, nothing tonight. Councilmember Hobart, I'll just work down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say thanks to the, the folks on, that came to talk about pit bulls tonight. It's a, it's a hot topic. Folks are passionate about the issue regardless of where you fall on it. I do want to say that there are folks that believe it should be an easy thing for us just to vote to overturn it, because the first council just voted to put it in place. I understand that sentiment. It's easy to Monday morning quarterback and say, "They did that, so we should do it." I disagree with that first council, because they did all the work, the folks did all the work to get that petition, and I think they should have let it go to a vote. Ms. Young spoke earlier tonight, she was on the council, and she felt the same way. And I think that would have been the wisest thing to do. I can tell you, in speaking with my colleagues and even some past council members, that at the vote on the marijuana tax on April 4th, that a number of us, and a number of past council members, and I know a number of you folks, for all the public out there, there will be a petition drive, initiative petition, at the polls. You'll be able to sign in support a repeal of the pit bull ban, if you'd like to support that effort. It will be real easy if you come out to vote. I would love it personally, if you would like to vote in support of the marijuana tax. It's your choice, but you, it will be really easy...
You know, councilmember, you're, you're pushing the line there. You're testing my patience.
I, I know. I, I understand where the line is.
I'll give you one, that'll be the last time.
I understand. I understand where the line is, and I'll walk right up to it. But, but it will be real easy for anybody listening, if you want to come out and also support a repeal of the pit bull ban, you'll be able to find a petition at most polling places on that day. So, and if you don't, then of course you don't need to sign. But I just wanted to shout out, I wanted to say thank you for coming tonight, for everybody, for speaking their piece on it. I appreciate all, all opinions on it. We receive opinions on all sides. And specifically because of that, that is exactly why I would not vote from the dais, to put my own opinion into law. I think there should be a vote on it, and the public should decide the matter ultimately. I think that's the fairest way to be. So, anyway, today is the first day of spring. Happy spring, folks.
Okay. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to ask a question to our city manager regarding the video and audio struggles that we're having with our committee meetings. Are we, I got a lot of complaints with PUAB, there were some issues there. Are we working through those bugs? Are we gonna, what is our timeframe of getting those taken care of? Because we've talked about this every couple meetings, so.
Certainly. So there are two spots in the city that are available to have public meetings that can also be broadcast through City 7 or streamed through the city's YouTube channel. That's here in the council chamber, and then in the conference room on the ground floor at the Independence Utility Center. There's been a number of improvements made in this chambers over the last several years to bring that quality along. There's still some issues that need to be worked through, but it's, it's come further than, than where that was. The IUC is not built for the level and number of meetings that we're having. I think personally, it's good that we're having, you know, the meetings, and we're, we're trying to broadcast them, but that facility was not built for that purpose specifically. Our staff has done their level best to MacGyver some, some solutions together, but it's clearly failing, and they know that. But they're, they're just trying to make a functional go of it. The next step that we're escalating to, we have made contact with a vendor to come in and help us figure out what other intermediate solutions might exist to, to at least get us through a little bit better than the, the quality that folks are experiencing right now. But ultimately, this is probably going to require a significant investment of financial resources. So as we're going through the budget process, that's probably one of the budget packages that we'll look at and bring forward to the council, and just, you know, with it, like we've talked about, see where that ranks in the priorities of everything out there. So we're, we're working to try to improve upon the situation we're in, but we know that a more expansive and expensive solution is what's truly needed to bring that to where it's functional to meet the expectations that we all rightfully have.
Yeah. I think, I think whatever, rather than doing the MacGyver, we definitely, this is, this is our, an important area of transparency and accountability that our community depends on. So whatever we need to do to get it online and make it consistent, until we get into the budgeting, we need to do quickly. And so if, if we could get some numbers and just see what recommendations need to be made for the here and now, and then we can work on how we're going to revamp it, revive it, rebuild it, whatever needs to happen. But I think it's just too important in terms of our accountability to our community to, just to have meeting after meeting, we, we have levels of frustration, and, and we just need to try to avoid that where possible. The other thing I wanted to point out, in East Independence, the old, it's called the old Gihaw Building. So it's the Government Employee Health Administration Building. We had a 38-year-old entrepreneur who bought that building and is being extremely innovative in, in building a 48-unit, it's a container complex. It's shipping containers that he is taking, and he's revamping them and then putting them together as modular multifamily units at, located at Broadway and 31st Street. Love the idea that he's building them here. I hate the idea that he's doing them in Kansas City. And if you didn't know, he, he's bringing jobs here. He's 38 years old. He's, he's made a multimillion-dollar investment in this facility, and he's employing people starting at $30 an hour. Bet you didn't know that. But that's some of the good things that are happening in our city. And I've been invited, I, I know I, I talked with him when he was talking about coming in, former councilmember Huff and myself, and Mr. Hill met with him, and we, we coaxed him to come to, to Independence and, and finally got him to commit to do it. And he's, he is spending a lot of money just remodeling that facility. And it's, you'd never know the space that's inside there if you drive by this, this building. It's massive. And so I would encourage anyone, if you're out that direction, to, to maybe pop in and see what you, see what you can see. And, and Mr. Walker, you and I have been invited to tour this modular unit. So I'd like to extend that invitation to you, and I'd like to go down and see it, and, and see what, what they're doing. And hopefully we can land a project here in Independence. That kind of innovation excites me, and especially with young, young entrepreneurs. So, the other thing, Mr. Walker, I wanted to bring to your attention, I, I don't know if you knew this or not, but just roaming through some of the commercial listings of real estate in our community, came across one that I'm very familiar with, I'm sure you will be too, it's The Falls, Bass Pro. They are wanting to lease 490,805 square feet. I didn't know if you were aware of that. I don't know if there's a conflict there, but I think we need to look into that, because I do think it's a conflict. So if we could do that, that would be, that'd be good, if we could reach out. I'm not sure what the details are. I'm waiting for our audit to come back on that particular deal, but I'm curious why they're trying to sublease almost 500,000 square feet out there. So if you could look into that and report back, that would be wonderful. Other than that, happy spring, everyone. Can't come soon enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We had a city employee pass at the age of 56, and I just wanted to have a remembrance of Mike Savanna. He's worked for the city since he was in high school. And so I just wanted to offer my condolences to his teammates who... and so I just wanted to offer my condolences to his teammates who worked with him at the city, and we appreciate that longevity of service and what he gave to our city, and our condolences to his wife, Donna, thank you.
Thank you, I just have a couple of comments, on Saturday, the Daughters of the American Revolution, it seems that my chair always falls apart when I'm trying to speak, Daughters of the American Revolution on Saturday did a presentation at the Genealogy Library, which was excellent about the kind of the history and background of Leavenworth, not the penitentiary, but of the army base there, and the great job they do there, and also the Army College, which does an extraordinary job, and I think they've had actually, I could be wrong on this, 28 heads of state who have gone through there, and they lead countries all over the world, also, I want to thank everyone tonight who spoke, you did an incredible job, it was eloquent, it was passionate, it was well expressed, and it was incredibly civil, and I cannot say thank you enough for doing that, that, I just, a good debate, I love it, if you were at our dinner at our household, we have debates like that all the time, but civility is the rule, and everyone did a terrific job tonight, and I cannot express my appreciation for that, and to hear your views and concerns, and I've got to tell you, a number of you are well-prepared, and had information and statistics and knowledge that I did not, was not aware of, and I just want to say thank you for the education in that, and so that was excellent, so great civility there, and thank you very much for that. Just one last note, one of the most interesting letters I've gotten recently was from a young lady, she's eight years old, she's in second grade, and her name is Judith, I won't say anything else to protect her, but she wrote me a letter and asked me about what it was like to be the mayor and things like that, and I thought, why not, and so we had her and her family up at City Hall for lunch last Friday, and on her way out, she asked me questions, and I know a number of you here know I love the power of questions, Anthony Robbins said, "The quality of your life is determined by the quality of your questions." Judith is going to have an extraordinary quality of life because she asks extraordinary questions, two questions she asked me on the way out were, number one, what advice would you give to your eight-year-old self? I'll tell you what, I think Judith is fantastic, and that is great, a great, great question, and I'll just say one less, one little thing on the eight-year-old advice, there's a book by Viola Davis, and I think Viola Davis is an extraordinary actress, and she has a book out called Becoming Me, which is extraordinarily difficult to listen to, her childhood was very difficult, Viola Davis was asked the question, "Who are you?", and she said, "I'm that eight-year-old girl," and so when Judith asked me about that, "Who are you and what advice would you give to your eight-year-old self?", I thought of Viola Davis, but also the important thing I said to Judith is, "Make sure that you live your life, that you make that eight-year-old person proud." The second thing that she asked was a, another great question, and she said, "I'm running for student council, and can you give me any advice?", and I said, "Oh, can I?", and I proceeded to probably give her more advice than she ever wanted, but the piece of advice I gave her, which I think is incredibly important during the pandemic, I listened to a book about George Washington, and I know Councilmember Hobart is probably squirming down there that I'm going down this path, but on George Washington, and written by Ron Chernow, he also wrote the famous book that became Hamilton and then ultimately became the play, and he had a great line in there, and this is very important for all of us in life, and for importantly as elected officials, and the line was from a French aristocrat called Lord Chesterfield, Lord Chesterfield said, "A man would rather have his story heard than his wish granted," meaning that the importance for us as elected officials to listen is far more important than anything that we can do, and so with that, I just want to say thank you for coming to the city tonight, expressing your opinions, I appreciate that, it was a very, very, I just have the tremendous respect for everyone that spoke tonight, because you did this very respectfully, very civilly, and with great passion and with great information, so with that, we will call this meeting adjourned, thank you.